So before we, actually no, we're going to start, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to call this council meeting to order. So we're welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting, probably groundbreaking here from April 1st, 2020. Let's stand or whatever you can do to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to point this at the flag. There it is. Here we go.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which is stands, one nation, on the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks everyone. So Chris Vitale is going to just put a couple of things if you haven't already. I can't see it at the moment, Chris, but it's a link to the Secretary of State's website that will be a PDF for the agenda of this meeting. And that's, that's, that's available to everybody and including the council. So you can get that if you need to. Throughout all of this, it's very important that we do a couple of things. First off is that when you start speaking, that you say, I'm looking at Mary, so this is Mary, right? And then make your comment if you're making the motion, whatever it happens to be. But before everything, please state your name. And the reason why is that you may be able to see it and so can I, but anybody who called in will not be able, well, may not know who is speaking. So state your name before you start and then make your comments. In regards to voting, we're going to do a roll call vote. And we're going to go through as the same way we do our prerogative section. So we will start with Tim and then we will go to Mary, Tony, and then Aaron, okay? And I ask that, that you say yea or nay. I'm just going to ask for all in favor and then I'll ask you to, to comment on it. And as we do normally in the meeting, we'll take a couple of minutes and, and if we disagree on something, hopefully we can find resolution before the vote actually happens. So if there isn't any other concerns or questions, so just reminder again, state your name before you start. If you don't, I'm going to remind you to do it. Be aware of your surroundings. If you can have your phone off mute and I'm speaking to the council administrator and any department head that's involved with this, if you can do it, great. But if we find that there's a lot of noise coming from your microphone, then Chris is going to be actively muting again, just so it stays quiet. So be careful when you go to speak, make sure that you are not muted. Okay? So just check it before you start. So Mr. Clerk, I'd like to go to you unless there's a question before we start. Thank you.
Nathan, it's Mike or Sil- Solicitor. Can you just state, or I can state what the phone number is for those who want to join if they desire to join.
Mike, what, uh, I've got it right here. The agenda shows it and it's a Zoom meeting by telephone, which would be 1-929-205-6099. I'm going to give that again and then I'm going to give the meeting number. So the telephone number is 929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 840-020-023. Give that one more time. Mike, would it be appropriate to go through that again in, I don't know, a half an hour or 20 minutes?
Let's see where we are.
Okay, all right. And by the way, everyone, I expect that Mike and/or Amy may weigh in during the course of the evening. I've asked them to interject rudely if necessary to make sure that we stay absolutely cool and comfortable in regards to open meeting laws. This is obviously our first run at this as a normal council meeting. So unless there's anything else, I'd, I'd like to turn it over to the town clerk so we can get started. Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council. The first meeting, the first item on this evening's agenda is to vote on the provisional budget schedules A, B, and C.
Meeting makes a motion to approve.
Second, Tony.
So we have a motion and a second to approve, but I, Lou, did you want to make a point? I'm sorry.
I was going to make a point that the numbers that are provided on the agenda are not the numbers that were discussed on Monday. When the, the council concluded its first round of budgets workshops, those are the numbers that emerged. And then it also included the change to include the action of the, of the Joint Finance Committee.
So I'm going to take a moment if I may. I know there was a motion and a second, but to recap that, we had talked about, sorry everyone, Lou, could you mute your? That's better. Okay, great. So we took some time on Monday night's budget workshop to go through the numbers. We had talked about a few things, so I can go through all of this. I know we've already gone through the budget workshop. I knew there were two points that were discussion points that we said that we were going to bring up this evening. Those two points, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong here, were the, sorry, the library as part of it and then human resources. Now, the library had a suggestion or suggested cuts or savings of a total of $68,000. And then there was a suggestion of a 20% reduction in human resources. So I'd like to open it up to the council to discuss this. I can't hear anyone, so I don't know if anybody's talking yet.
Can we, do you want us to raise our hand or just talk? Speak?
So I can see you talking, Mary, so go ahead. So this is Mary.
Okay, this is Mary Perella. I'm not sure why my last name's not on the screen, but maybe because it's made, that's how it shows up, I don't know.
I'm going to fix it right now.
I mean, I, I think the effort that was made the other night was very helpful in terms of trying to get the tax rate down from 40 to 34 cents, I believe. Nathan, is that correct?
That's right. If, if we were to take all of the cuts or put in place all of the cuts, it was down to 30, excuse me, it's 31 cents.
Oh, 31.
Let me make sure I'm not misspeaking here, I'm so sorry. We had a few things that we looked at and I apologize, I misspoke. It was 34 cents, you are correct.
Okay. So I think that's great and I think we needed to head in that direction. And I know we talked about it all through the budget process, which started the week of around the 15th or 16th, that, that, the St. Patrick's Day week. And we didn't know what COVID-19 was going to do and how long it would last and where we would be. So we, I think we were very aware of it all along. My only point as I, as I made on Monday with the potential cuts that we've made, the concern that I have is to some degree with the library, cutting a very large amount out there and some of the human resources. And the three that concern me, at least at the 20% rate, is the East Bay CAP, the East Bay Center, which is the mental health center, and, and the senior center. And those are all like really vital services. And I think particularly in this, in this time, as you know, East Bay CAP and the mental health center, they, they, they use this money, I believe, as match to other funds that they have. And they take patients without, like on a sliding scale. So our, the CAP agency has a health center, the mental health piece. I'm very, very worried because people will need those services and I assume that they are going to really be turning to these agencies more than ever, depending on how long this all lasts. So, and then certainly the senior center, I believe that's a 33%, 30, I'm sorry, $33,000 cut. And I'm not sure that would bring them back to, I don't know how many years ago, but several years ago. I don't think that it should be that large for those three because they're directly dealing with this whole issue that we're speaking of. And we know that from what we're hearing in the news, that this is not necessarily, I mean, this is this fiscal year, but next year they expect this to happen again, hopefully not as seriously. Hopefully there'll be some antivirals on the market, but that, you know, this could happen again in the fall when the flu season comes. We don't know how long into the summer it, this, this particular, well, this particular aspect of it will last. So those are my concerns.
This is Aaron Lay speaking. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, just a question for Mary, you might know the answer to this, but to what extent are East Bay CAP and some of those other organizations, do you know the extent to which this year they'll be trying to pursue matches with the money that we have or?
I don't really know. I mean, because they haven't presented, they've been at the same level for a very long period of time. They used to be up higher, I think in the, maybe in the 30s if I remember correctly. And they've been at this level probably since the recession. What they've always presented in the past, right now, I think, this is my sense that the administrators in the last several years have made it pretty clear they're not going to get any increases and that they have been accepted, accepting and gracious with that. I have not had a chance to like talk to them about that, but I think that they always used to present, I can't say they still do, but they always used to present this as this is like showing the towns, the towns' commitment to the project and that they're able to say that in their, whatever applications they have, the state, local, federal government funding and probably to foundations.
So Mary, you're suggesting to level fund the senior center and?
Tim, did you say your name? I'm sorry. I'm going to, sorry, we get a little cumbersome in the beginning.
Tim, and Mary, just clarify, you're looking to level fund the senior center and the East Bay CAP you're interested in? What was that percentage?
Well, I was interested in even, just leaving them as level funded. So only one of those had an increase. Or, you know, I don't know if Raquel was able to put together any, and what I, what I didn't see, and forgive me if it was sent to me and I didn't see it, it's a little hectic in my, where I work, but you know, the, like what it would look like if it was like a 15% cut or do we, you know, and how do we handle like these sort of very vital functions, particularly at this point in time, that is sort of like health and welfare of our citizens? They all are to some degree, so I don't want anybody to misunderstand me. But right now what we're going through, I mean, the amount of anxiety of people, all of our ages, and especially our kids, it's like very, very high. And that is the place that you would turn, would be, woke up at the mental health center. And if you don't have sharens, and right now there's people that are, you know, there's a whole lot of issues going on. We don't know as of July 1st where any of that will be. So I think that that comes to 9,000. I mean, if we cut them at all, I advocate not cutting them, but if we cut them at all, it shouldn't be more than like a $500,000, $1,000 cut to those agencies. And the senior center, I think would go back to either 152 or one, or maybe two years ago was like 149, but it should not go anywhere below, I think, that amount. So that is just my, my thoughts. I did send you all, and I'm not, you know, I'm not putting anybody on the spot to defend their budget. I was just saying like, you know, we talked about it, people weren't too happy about it, that's okay, you know, of maybe putting off some of the hiring for a month or two of some of the new positions. I know that they're very much needed and I support them both. That was just one thought that I had. The other is also in the memo that I sent, I think there was some other, a couple of other thoughts that I had as ways, way to generate some of this money back.
Mr. Chairman, Tony, I would, I would concur that we should level fund the senior and the mental health. That would be my suggestion, especially with the times they were in right now. I think a very difficult times for actually both agencies and they much needed, you know, to rescue the situation, to assist with the situation at this point in time.
Is there any other thoughts from the council?
Tim, Raquel, question for you. If we did a 15% across the board, my only feeling is picking and choosing, but I do hear that we are in unprecedented situation. So I do hear my colleagues there. Was curious if we could run the numbers on a 15%.
What I did do is I provided the council with a document backing out the library as well as human resources. And so what we would do is at that point, I can run the numbers on 15, but for discussion purposes, tonight it's one cent on every 25,000. That's what we're going to use just to place scenarios, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Did you, did you email that to us today? I didn't see it.
I, yeah, what I did is I emailed, I did a spreadsheet on the two scenarios that were talked about at the last meeting as well as your proposal, which would be to restore the cut, the proposed cut to the library as well as human resources. And, and I'm sorry that you didn't get it, but with, without those cuts, it would be a 38 cent increase in taxes.
Well, I just want to be clear, I wasn't, I wasn't proposing to go back to include all of the money for the library, but I, my suggestion was that we take the $12,000 position, put that back in and then let the, the director make the, you know, have the discretion to arrange her staff as, as necessary. So I wasn't looking to put back $68,000, I was looking to put back 12. I just want to make that clear. Okay. Because I think the two things together, that, that 12,000 there and the 9,000, it's maybe like a penny and a half, I think it might, is what it might be. And we might be able to find that somewhere else to do the senior center, the mental health agency and at least one, you know, mitigate one cut at the library.
So I'd like to share just real quick here, just to remind everybody, we made adjustments to the budget and Raquel sent these documents today. Because the Joint Finance Committee, six of those members are the council and the administrator, decided that this was the last year for state cuts for their funding formula. And the JFC, again, the council and the administrator that are here this evening, decided that it was appropriate to fully fund, I'm putting quotes in the air because there was an adjustment they saw for savings, but in essence, the school got fully funded this year to help them go through this. So that requires us to find approximately $120,000. Some of these cuts do do that. If all of them were done, it was 276,000 in savings in our budget. That included most of the things that we all agreed on, you know, there was just these couples of points. I personally think that I'm okay with if, of increasing, or said another way, doing away with the $12,000 cut to the library and, and leaving the $56,000 cut there. And then in regards to the, the two points that were made about the senior center and the 25,000 in East Bay, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank, I'm out, I apologize. I'm okay with, with level funding those, but making the adjustments on the rest. So if we do that, I think that picks up, that's probably a cut in around the area of 250 and I'm sure that, I'm going to ask Raquel to do the math, math in just a moment. But if we, we have to do these cuts and, and, and I don't think anybody disagrees with that, but it's, I, I'm very uncomfortable picking and choosing on the human resources side because there are, there are parts of those that are $500 that we're now going to cut by 20% that that's going to hurt more than the, than the 2,000 and 3,000 from the others. So they all get hurt. We all get hurt and we all don't want to do this, but I do believe it's appropriate. So if there's general agreement that we level fund the senior center from last year and level fund EB CAP from last year, did I miss anything?
Oh, is this, I was suggesting the CAP and the mental health center, which is the East Bay Center. Tony, I think you said the East Bay Center and not the CAP.
The mental health center though, right? The E cap.
Well, there's two different ones.
Right.
They've all merged together, there's two separate sections in our budget. One is the East Bay Center, which was, you know, East Bay Mental Health Center in the past.
Right, that operates out of Barrington.
Right, and then the East Bay CAP, which is in middle, in Newport and in East Province, but serves this region. I was looking on my, on my email and I just don't see that. I don't see that document, so.
It was a, a three-page document from Raquel that came about mid-afternoon or so.
Was it sent by Raquel?
I'm so sorry. It was sent by Lou. I apologize. So as you do that, Mary, I'm pulling up human resources so we can get those and make sure that we're all on the same page in regards to that. So I'm on that right now, that's why my eyes are on this side. There is East Bay Center and East Bay Community Action. East Bay Center is $25,000. East Bay Community Action is $20,000. So if we were to level fund those, it was proposed that would be a 20%. So that's 4,000 on East Bay Community Action, right? And 5,000 on East Bay Center. So a total of $9,000 would go back or would be lessened as a cut. I'm going to say it that way. To remind everybody, it was proposed, please stay with me, it would be a $46,000 cut, but that was proposed from human resources, 46,000, 020. So we can put back in that $9,000 specifically for those line items that, I'm sorry, and the third one, I apologize, is Benjamin Church, Bristol Senior Center was, level funding from last year was $158,000. Raquel, could you help me with some quick math on that?
That makes it like, I think if I, my calculations that I sent out yesterday made it about a $33,000 cut at the 20%. So it ends up being like to, I think restore it to somewhere around where they are now, it ends up being around 20,000 if I'm correct.
So it was, Raquel, can you help me with the math on this one? I am checking it myself.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm trying to, so we are restoring.
What was proposed? Yes, which was $25,000, that's D in 805.
And then 20,000. And I believe that the senior center was 165 total.
That was proposed for this year, what I heard was level fund from last year was And that again is level funding from last year. And please, council, if you disagree with what I'm saying, please speak up.
Uh, no, that's correct.
All right, so I'm going to give Raquel just a moment to check those numbers. So I would ask that we could move to the library. Is there any disagreement on what was proposed of restoring the $12,000? That line item was the part-time administrative support and then keeping in place the 20% reduction, which was the 56,000. Is there any opposition to that?
This is Tim, I have no.
Can I, I'm sorry, this is Jackie O'Brien. I don't know if I can say anything yet or do I have to wait or?
I'm going to ask you to wait, Jackie, while we go through this, but I certainly recognize you in a moment.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that I'd like to restore more. I don't think I'm going to win on that point, but I think that whatever we do to whatever departments, because there's a lot of cuts, I mean, what I find unusual or worrisome on this department is it relies on more part-time staff than most of our other organ, other agencies and departments. That's why I worry about this, about the library. But I think in any of this, whatever we end up doing, we need to be able to, one, revisit because we don't know what's really going to happen. And two, I think we have to just give the discretion to the director to handle their budget and their staffing as needed. Because they may feel that there's a couple of people there that they just can't put on any reduced time, you know? So it's not just money, it's reduced time of, of what services. So they may, they may be able to, you know, they may need to reorganize a little bit. And I think that that is important, that we're acknowledging that and not saying, well, they're going to have to cut 20% off of all of that. They have to figure out how they're going to make that all work.
So let's speak about that point just for a moment. Just to remind the council, the administrator has that possibility, and the library is a little bit different, but with the other departments, there is a line item transfers, there are adjustments that can be made. Obviously, we're not looking to have that in the nth degree, right? Because what's the point in having line items and breakdown and if you can just move them around and if you can, it, it is very difficult to find out if a line item is actually being budgeted correctly. That being said, we're in strange times right now. I personally have zero opposition to the cut being made and then allowing the department head and the administrator to work accordingly to find those cuts. If there's, for example, on Monday night's meeting, Chief Lynch had brought up that he felt that he could find that money from another line item. We were talking about getting rid of the funding for launching and winterizing the boat and he found it through ammunition and weapons. And to me, I'm absolutely fine with that. The idea is to cut, and nobody wants to cut it all, I'm going to keep saying that. But obviously, we need to find these savings because we are in a very difficult time and there's no opposition from anybody on that. So if, so to Mary's point, I believe the flexibility is there and I know somebody else wanted to speak, just give me a moment, sec. I think that's absolutely appropriate. I'm absolutely fine with that myself, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Aaron Lay here. I think I understand what you were talking about. You were essentially saying, and Jackie can speak to this point a little bit when she comes on the talk, but you're essentially saying that, you know, we could cut the 12, or do $12,000 reduction for the part-time administrative support. And then if it's up to the administrator, the prerogative of the administrator, if the administrator says, look, they actually need that administrative support, so we're just add, we're just going to take out, we'll be part-time supporting more. Is that kind of what you're essentially, and so that, micro-managing what Mary is doing, we're essentially saying there's still a, they're still going to be too devoted to one thing versus another. Sorry, I have kids screaming in the background.
This is what it means, right?
Exactly. So, but essentially that's what you're saying, correct? And again, Jackie.
So yes, and just to use it as, use a different analogy, unrelated, but if EPW this year had a lot of extra sand and salt, right? So we budgeted, so it, that would be a way that maybe they don't need that for next year and they can reallocate those funds someplace else. I'm stressing this too, though, is that I'm okay with that, I'm sure my colleagues are too and certainly will talk about it. We don't need, we don't want to do that too much because what's the idea behind having line items? We want to follow along, we want to make sure it's appropriate, we want to be as lean as possible. But I think we're in a time where some, some latitude, and it's always there, but maybe a little bit more right now would seem most appropriate. But I want to hear from my other colleagues if there's input that wants to be given. If not, Mr. Administrator, and I'm going to open it up to Jackie just in a moment, I don't know if you, you wanted to share anything on this right now?
No, you've all been down the list. I think you know all the, all of the organizations and, you know, collectively you'll make your best judgment for the community.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to Jackie. Go ahead, Jackie. You heard where we are at the moment.
Hi, okay, I did hear some, Mary, I'm sorry, some of your, what you were saying went out as well as Aaron. I don't know if it's my connection with the computer, but I heard some, but not all. Where do we? I'm sorry. Yes.
Let me, let me help you with some of that. Aaron's point, and Aaron, stop me if you disagree. Well, he was making sure that, he wanted to make sure he understood that what we were saying was this, is that we're proposing a decrease or cuts in the part-time wages, but if it requires you to move that money around within, inside your department to do and act in the best interest of the library, then this council, and again, I'm, we're going to talk about this in a moment, just to make sure we're in complete agreement, this council sees that flexibility as appropriate at this moment, obviously working with the administrator, right? So that's what, did I capture that well, Aaron? Okay, excellent. So go ahead, Jackie.
Just one quick thing, and that is, Jackie, you remember at the budget meeting when you presented the library's budget, there was some question about some of the subscription services and things like that, and there was some discussion about cutting some of that back. Now, with the library being closed, which at the time may have seemed like maybe it would come for a couple of, you know, it's going to be potentially a couple of months, that to mitigate the cuts, you can, you could adjust those, those line items, I think is the point, because you may not need all of that right now because you're not open.
Correct.
You don't know where you're going to be in, you know, remember, this is for July 1st, this budget, but we don't know where we're going to be. So, oh, you may have some savings from this year that, you know, you could put towards those items because you're closed and you can then not have to have that expense for next year.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, the thing that worries me is to say, for anybody to interpret that, you must have a strict 20% reduction of part-time staff because it's going, sorry, I think if I touch my computer screen, it makes me jump. It makes it seem like then all that has to cut back, but you may be able to mitigate that down to a slower thing if you look at the budget as a whole. And I don't want to go down any other different path, but I mean, the other way to do this, but it would have been more, way more difficult and it would be more, it would be like starting a low break day again, as if there was, let's As if there was, let's say, I don't know what the equivalent would be, let's say a five percent cut across the board, then the departments would all have to go back and figure it out. And I think that is kind of, when it was placed on certain particular items and on the part-time staff, I just wanna make sure that everybody has the ability to go back and to readjust, so that it is the least the least harmful that it could possibly be for the delivering of the services that we expect in our community and that we need in our community, and we get back to some normalcy. That's, that's how I view it.
Okay, this is Jackie now. I understand where you're coming from. We have stopped subscriptions because we are closed until further notice right now, until at least through the month of April. So we, about a month and a half now, we've got subscriptions that are being stopped. Obviously, being close to the public, it's kind of foolish and a waste of money at this point to have those keep coming in, and there's no one there to read them. With that said, there's also a portion that we have to maintain a certain number of, there's gotta be people on staff on shift for granting aid that we get through the libraries throughout the state. And that's another role that we have to follow as well.
So Jackie, if I may, I'm gonna just add something real quick, and I think it really wasn't about the, I think Mary was using subscriptions just as an example of a place that you can adjust, and we don't have to go through each line, it was more about saying to you, and again, I look for the council, we don't have to gain agreement just the second, but I think we're all on the same page saying that we're focusing on this part-time. But we believe that autonomy should and will be given to departments and the administrator to adjust your budget accordingly. It doesn't have to come necessarily from part-time. Maybe it's gonna be from this, and that, and that totaling this number. That's the point. You don't have to go through each one. We just wanted to make sure that you understood, and obviously subsequently, all the other departments, that we expect some flexibility here. It always exists, maybe more in the time that we're in. Okay?
Great, understood.
So Raquel, I'm sorry, anybody else wanna add in before we? Cause I'd like Raquel to just give us that clarity on those dollars. Raquel?
So my question is, for human resources, it's a little over two hundred thousand. And if you're going to level fund the Senior Center and East Bay Center and East Bay Community Action, you're at two hundred thousand. So you're not gonna get a forty thousand dollar cut out of there, there's not enough money to cut. So.
I got it. I got it. Once you remove those large, so Raquel, if I'm understanding you correctly, once you move those large dollar items, the rest is so small that twenty percent of what the remaining is, is not very much.
Right, you're looking at a little over twenty thousand, so I mean, twenty percent of that, you're looking at a four thousand dollar cut.
Right. So I.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say that in some cases, though, I mean, some of the activities that are in there, like Little League, they may not even be a season. They would love to have the money, I'm sure, to offset other expenses for other years, but, you know, April twenty, whatever it is, April twenty-something is usually when they open the season. That's not gonna happen. We know that. Will they be able to open it in May? We really don't know. So I think that in some cases, even though these are the larger organizations in there, it's not really all the same, because they're very, very different types of services that are a lot of nice and good things to have, and it's small amounts of money, granted. But they're not exactly the same thing. And that is the only reason I had proposed in my email that I sent out yesterday, my thoughts, was, you know, a few other places where we could, you know, can, can we, it's just a question, take another five or ten thousand dollars from the police detail that we talked about, you know, the other night? If, you know, I, I'm sensing there's no appetite to change the hiring thing, that was just thrown out as, as an idea of where you could do that. But there's a couple, I'm trying to find my thing, there was a couple of other thoughts that I had in there, where you could pick up a few thousand dollars. I, I know, I know we've talked about it numerous times. And I know Raquel doesn't agree with me on this, but you know, what else, a lot of people don't agree with me often, but, you know, like the revow, we're gonna have to pay for it, whenever it comes up and we have to do it, we're gonna have to pay for it. So what's the, so we know that. And I don't really think it would be that harmful to take five or ten thousand dollars from that for this year, further than we already took some, and, and just know that whenever our next revow is, we're gonna have to be putting in the next year or two, a little bit more money. I don't think that that's such a, I mean, we've done that many times in the past, and I don't know why that is, to me, that would be a relatively reasonable thing to do, because given all of this, and given the fact that so many communities are going to be struggling, we don't know when the federal funds will come back to the communities. Who knows if the legislature might even put the revow, the next revow's off for a year or two. So I'm not sure why we're worrying so much about that. We know we're gonna have to pay for it when the time comes. And we try to put this money aside as like an account for it, but if we have to do ten thousand less, then we just, you know, when the economy's better in another year or two, we can deal with it.
Alright, so Lou, the town clerk made a good point, which is, just to remind everybody, is that the dollars that we're talking about at this moment would be for twenty-one.
Right.
And my, my point is like, Little League has got their, King Philip Little League will be using the money they got in July of this year, or last year, excuse me, for this year's opening and all of that stuff, so. But I think, I think we've covered this. I guess the question is at this point, is there an appetite? We were at forty-six thousand dollar cut from Human Services. If we were to lessen that to a cut of, of, I don't know, twenty thousand dollars, and, and look, I'm looking to get to a better place for all of us. If we apply that, I think that's a lessening, that's actually not so bad when you look at if we were level funding from last year on all of this. So I think it would be less painful. We could apply twenty thousand as a percentage all the way down the board, not twenty percent, but twenty thousand. Tell me if there's appetite on that, because we do need to cut this. I remind everybody is that it's gotta come from everywhere. Mary's brought up that it can, we can do less with the with the revow, but it's all gonna come from someplace. These seem like appropriate, and we're honestly right there. So this is our last line. So if we can find some middle ground on this, which it would sound like, what's, I look to my colleagues. I'm okay with a twenty thousand dollar spread proportionately, but I'm open to a suggestion.
Chairman. This is Aaron Lysby. Are you proposing perhaps like a ten percent across the board cut that might round it off the sharp corners of twenty percent cut that have in place? Is that kind of what you're thinking there?
In essence, that's what it would be. We've got a total that was proposed, and there was a couple of thousand dollars difference here, so bear with me, of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And ten percent would be twenty-seven, sorry, twenty-two thousand dollars. It's two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, so ten percent will be twenty-two thousand. So yeah, I guess in essence, in essence, that's what I am saying, ten percent. I'm proposing that, and I'm looking for agreement here, because I think we're, I think we've covered this, I think we just need to get to a point that we can move forward.
So if we do the twenty thousand, I'm sorry, that percentage you just said, whatever.
Ten percent.
The ten percent, then, then places like the Senior Center, that would be based on the one, on the one sixty-three or one sixty-five that was proposed in the budget for this year, correct?
I agree. I'm going off the approved budget by this council. And I showed the line, I said two hundred and twenty-seven, that was based prior to making it one hundred and sixty-five, just so everybody's clear, but. But I think, so I would ask, Tony, I know you wanted to make a comment, I could see you.
No, I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay, so does anybody have opposition to that, ten percent across the board?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron Lay again. So essentially, what this would do is it would really, it would increase our tax rate from fourteen oh six, wait, we, we've known fourteen oh six. Because of the twelve, and back to libraries. So it would bring us to about fourteen oh nine. Is that, would that be our tax rate?
Not enough of a, sorry, this is Tim, is that enough of a reduction?
So Raquel, do you agree with that math? So if we were, we in essence were increasing our cut, I don't even know how to say that, but or decreasing the cut, actually is the better way to say that. We were at two hundred and seventy-six thousand, uh, cutting everything, that we talked about already. There's a lot of feedback there. Okay.
So we were.
We're at two hundred and seventy-six, what was proposed is now we would be at two sixty-four, and then to forty-four, about two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of cuts. I'm ballparking, but tell me if you agree with that.
Okay, so I just have to get some clarification. So you're, you wanna now have a ten percent cut on what was approved. So what was approved for Human Resources was two thirty, one hundred, because you moved it up to one sixty-five. So the cut would be twenty-three thousand ten. And then there was a proposal, so you're actually, you know, you're restoring the balance between the, the difference between the forty-six and the twenty-three. And then I know that there was some discussion about the library, I just need clarification on that.
Sure, I'll do that for you. So what was proposed was, instead of a sixty-eight thousand dollar cut to the library, it would be a fifty-six thousand dollar cut to the library.
Okay, let me figure that out then. And then the twenty, and then only a twenty-three thousand dollar cut?
Correct, only twenty-three. We were at forty-six before, so.
Yep.
I'm, look, we've gone through this, I'm just trying to find a way that we can move forward. I asked my colleagues for input.
I think that we could mitigate that a little bit, because if we go, we went through the detailed wages, if you took another five thousand there and another five or ten thousand from like revow, we would only have maybe like a half a penny more on the, from what, the thirty-four cents. You know what I'm saying? Like, I think we could find a good piece of that money in those other, in those two places. It may be others too, but I mean, that's where I would think would be relatively simple to do.
So I'm gonna take a moment. I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead.
You know when the next revow is? Is it not, not this year coming up, is it?
It's two years, my memory says two years.
Right. I mean, I don't, I don't, I think we could take, I think we could take fifteen, like, five thousand more detailed wages and five thousand, and ten thousand from revow. And that would bring it, so we'd be adding fifteen thousand back in, so these cuts become negligible, if anything, it might be like a half a cent.
Okay, so did everybody understand that the proposal was, is to lessen the cuts to Human Resources and pick up another five thousand, adjust the cut or increase the cut to the, sorry, let me get the line here. Police Department Detail Supplemental Wages, to, from forty to forty-five thousand dollars. And lessen that adjustment to Human Services by that amount. And then another five thousand dollars from the, the money that we're putting aside for the revow. So that would be a lessening of a cut to, to Human Services. In essence, that would make it thirteen thousand dollars difference to Human Services. Does that make sense to everybody?
It does, but I have a question, Mr. Chairman, Tony. I have a question, what does that leave us for the revow? Cause I get a little concerned, having sat through there, that eventually that's gonna catch up to us as well. So we're gonna be very careful to chip away that much at the revow.
Raquel.
Getting away like, I thought we was seven and five, that's like, not that much. You can put a little bit in next year, a little bit the following year, and make that up. Not like we've taken out twenty, thirty thousand of it. Like twelve thousand.
Raquel, could you confirm what it is currently, and I'm talking about the dollars for the revow? And then we can do the math.
Okay, and I just want to caution everybody, I ran the numbers, I mean, this is obviously my first year, but I ran the actuals, and I provided the council with that detail, even though it's budgeted seventy-five thousand, you're spending that and then some, so closer to a hundred thousand every single year in that line item. When I talked to the assessor, she said the statistical revow starts right after January, so you have to start paying them then. And that came from, I don't know if Michelle's on the call, but that's the actual numbers.
So how about this, everyone? How about a nice, easy way of doing this? What if we decrease the Human Resources by fifteen thousand? And we, we adjust the police detail summary from, sorry, detail supplemental wages, make that forty-five thousand, right? Does that make sense? And that'll give us those small adjustments that we need. Now, I remember, remember, everyone, this is the provisional budget. So we can go through, and we can get those particulars afterwards, but I think what we just did was, we lessened the effect of human resource, two human resources. The Detail Supplemental Wages for the Police Department is basically the Fourth of July, I know that we talked about this on Monday. And I think this Fourth of July is going to be an abbreviated Fourth of July. We are certainly going to celebrate it. But it's gonna be different than it has from years past, just because of all the things that are going on. Those dollars that are put aside for the Police Department are obviously for concerts and the Third of July and Fourth of July, and I think we're gonna be looking at something a little bit more abbreviated. So I don't think it'll negatively affect the Police Department. I'm gonna also bring up another point, that this is something I had a conversation with Raquel today, which is, we can appropriate fund balance from this year. We have not done that in quite a long time. But we could, depending on how things continue to progress, whether positively or negatively, as the end of June comes up. So if we need to plug a hole, we could take it from this year, the budget we're in right now, and use it for next year, depending on what's going on. There's no guarantee there's anything there. But if there is, we could use to offset that as a one-time appropriation of fund balance, right? So I think we've covered this. I think right now, we're into the weeds, we, and I love that we care this much, and I know we did. I think we're talking about a penny at this point. I think we've agreed on everything else. And unless there's objection to this, I think we've covered this. So if, unless there's objection, if we increase the cut to detail wages to forty-five thousand dollars, we lessen the cut to Human Resources to fifteen thousand, and then weighted accordingly, right? So we'll just go through that and apply it accordingly. Does anybody have disagreement on that?
Well, I'm just gonna say this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it, because I think it's the best we're gonna get on this, on this particular area. But I just wanna be cautious, because even though it may only be fifty dollars and it's no big thing, not every one of the Human Service items that we do have the same weight. I mean, they're important to the organizations, but they're not sort of, I don't wanna be dramatic when I say life and death, but when people are struggling for mental health or whatever, and, and, and living in fear and anxiety, that is a very serious issue, and it's not exactly the same weight. I would not give it the same weight as some of the other things that are in that Human Service line. I just wanna say that for the record.
So I, I don't think anybody disagrees with that, but I don't think that we could sit, and nor are you suggesting so. But I don't think we could sit here and go through the fifteen items and fifty dollars here, ten dollars there. It's just, this is a much more even-handed approach to doing it. Alright, so it sounds like we have agreement in regards to that. The clerk would like some clarity, please. Could you, Chris, could you put on Lou's mic if it's not on already? Okay, and I'm gonna mute mine.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask for a recap of, of the changes that you are proposing. And hopefully, we can tie it to something that was printed. Could we possibly use one of the scenario sheets that Raquel provided?
So yes, and I'm gonna do that, and Lou, I'm gonna ask you to mute again. I know this is painful. There we go. Okay, so if we go to the proposed reduction cap, which had a proposed reduction of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, okay? If we use that one, and we go to Rogers Free Library, and you remove, I'm sorry, yes, remove the proposed cut of twelve thousand dollars. And anyone who disagrees, please stop me if you do, okay? If we go down to Human Resources, eight oh five, the dollar figure there currently says forty-six zero two zero. the dollar figure there currently says forty-six zero two zero. You see that? Okay. We said fifteen. Am I correct with that? I'm not trying to bump it or lower it. Am I, did, did we say that or was it ten? I apologize. We had a lot of dialogue.
It wasn't ten, it was fifteen.
All right, so it's fifteen.
Wait a minute, ten what? Ten, ten to what or ten to restore?
Uh, with, the, uh, cut would be.
Oh, then I say it should be ten.
Fifteen, no, it was fifteen thousand dollars, Lou. So, so it, the eight oh five, that forty-six zero two zero, that number will be replaced with fifteen thousand dollars. Last was, um, detail wages, uh, police department, seven zero one. It's forty thousand dollars. That will be forty-five thousand dollars. Anybody disagree with that? Okay, all right. Raquel, did you need to add anything? Because I, obviously, this is, uh, your department in regards to the math part of it. Is there anything that you wanted to add? You are muted right now, just in case you don't know that. You're still muted.
Yeah, I'm jumping between spreadsheets and everything else.
Gotcha.
Police detail is what?
Forty-five.
Okay.
It was forty, it's now forty-five.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, everyone, so we had a motion and a second to approve, and I would, I would like a new motion or an amended motion, if you will, from Tim, if you believe it's appropriate to make these adjustments. So just, you know, as, as already presented, maybe is a nice way to put it. And I'm getting a, a thumbs up from Microsilo on that.
This is Tim making a motion to approve as stated.
To amend as stated.
Sorry, amend as stated.
And then I heard a second from Tony, is that correct?
From Tony, that's correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, could perhaps, usually what we do at this time is we actually state a number in the record. Is, is possible for Raquel to give us a number?
I know Raquel, she, she just needs a moment, I'm assuming, to do that math. I'll tell you what, while Raquel does that, Raquel, feel free. Could you mute then? Thank you. Um, I just want to remind everybody one more time. We got here because of the current situation. Um, we're all cognizant of that. We have these conversations and they're not light. To talk about, uh, cutting anything is not what we want to do. Um, I'd also like to make another very important point. The budget that was presented by the administrator, by his department heads, and by the treasurer, was a very lean budget to begin with. These adjustments are being made, A, because we, this town, decided, um, to fully fund the school department for this year, uh, because of what's going on, because this is their last year of their funding decrease from the state, and also obviously everything else that's going on. These additional adjustments are being made because this town, the leaders of this town, believe that we need to keep the taxes as low as possible. That's why there was so much dialogue here, to find any and every way to save that money. Um, and I believe we all agree, and unless you disagree, please tell me that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Tony, Mr. Chairman, uh, I concur with you. I'm glad that you restated, uh, you know, where we stand and why we doing, are going through this exercise this evening. And certainly also the fact that we did, uh, fund the school, uh, you know, to its full request.
Raquel, do you have that information? And I know we're asking a lot of you right on the fly. I apologize.
Yep, so I just want to be clear. We are, we took the two seventy-six, two seventy-six. We restored twelve thousand to the library. We restored thirty-one thousand oh two oh to human resources. And we took an additional five thousand dollar cut from police detail.
I concur.
Okay, then I have the number.
All right, so you're gonna state that for the clerk and for the record. Go ahead.
Okay, general fund is fifty-three million four seventy-six nine ten. Okay.
One, one, one second. Um, Lou is going to unmute and I'm gonna mute. Give him just a sec, there he is.
Okay, so, so, so the, so the motion that's on the floor would consider the Schedule A to be fifty-three million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. And the Schedule B is fifty thousand dollars, which is included in Schedule A. And then Schedule C, which is the enterprise funds of the, of a total of six million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, everyone, so we had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Thank you, Chris. Chris just muted Lou, that's why I said thank you. Um, is there any other discussion? Okay, so this is a roll call vote. So I'm gonna go through just like we talked about. So we'll, we'll start with Tim, and then Mary, Tony, and then Aaron. So Tim?
Motion to approve.
So you motioned that, so I'm gonna ask you just, I or? I, Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. I know it was long, but very important, so. Mr. Clerk, do you need a moment to, uh?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, so I just asked the clerk if he needed a moment, but we are all set. We're gonna move forward.
The, uh, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Tim, motion to cons, uh, approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Um, Mr. Solicitor, I know that the solicitor asked if we could pull two items, and I'm gonna ask him to speak on that. Those two items are H H six and H H seven. Mr. Admini-, uh, sorry, Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, yes. Um, those two items refer specifically to the, um, curb cut to Naomi Street in connection with Gooding Realty Plaza. And we are going to be discussing all of that at our April twenty-ninth meeting, so it is appropriate to not receive and file those this evening, but to continue those two, so that we'll have them in front of us at the April twenty-ninth meeting. So if I could just have, um, a, a motion to continue those to April twenty-ninth meeting, and then you can approve the consent agenda.
All move.
Second.
So that was Tony who made the motion, and Tim that's second. Is there any discussion? Okay, so again, roll call, Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. All right, so now, so that took care of you, Mr. Solicitor?
Yes.
Excellent. So now we had a motion already on the floor and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you.
Don't worry, we'll get through this a little quicker.
Okay, the next item is submission of minutes of previous meetings, items A one through five.
All move.
That was Tony as the motion, and Mary as the second. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Thank you.
The next, uh, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is ordinance two oh nine, two oh one nine dash twenty. This is amendment to the Town Motor Vehicle Code to create a no parking space on Milford Street. Uh, we have a request from the original petitioner for a continuance until April twenty-ninth. Uh, I would also bring to your attention, there's an associated item, uh, which is H one, is from another neighbor on the same street with a similar request.
I make a motion that we combine both and, uh, postponed, or continue, I should say, to, uh, when would be the next meeting?
April twenty-ninth?
April twenty-ninth, thank you.
So that was Tony making the motion to, uh, combine and continue, and Tim made the second. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron? Aaron gave a, a affirmative, and I, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, sorry. And I also vote aye. Thank you.
The next item is item D one, and this is the petition of Armin Pereira on behalf of the VFW Post two thirty-seven. Uh, this is a request for dancing and entertainment license. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, the, uh, fire chief, and a late item recommendation also from the, from the police department.
Based on the positive, this is Tim, based on the positive recommendations, I make a motion to approve.
So I'll move.
So I, there was a motion from Tim to approve and a second from Tony. Is there any discussion? So I just, I, I am absolutely for this. I just wanted to take a second, I, based on those recommendations. This was primarily for, it's my understanding, for Wednesday night, like, the car show, if you will, I'm putting quotes in the air, that was at, um, Sippin' Dip, and also allow them, uh, dancing and entertainment inside. There is no alcohol served outside. I know this is part of the recommendation. I just thought it was important to point that out. And I was happy to see that, uh, things like this are happening at the VFW Post. I think it's an excellent thing to happen, so, and I, I know we all are. So is there any other discussion? Okay, so Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And then I also vote aye. Thank you.
The, uh, the next item is the concerns, the, uh, petition of Joseph Rodriguez, one fifty Franklin Street, request for accessible parking space. Uh, this would be the second reading, and it was continued from March eleventh, twenty twenty. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, public works director, and chief of police.
So I'd like to share first, um, I looked at this, I'm sure we all did. We had some dialogue at our last meeting in regards to it. Um, some homework was done by a few, and I looked, I, I checked this out, and the, um, Franklin Court has fourteen spaces. Uh, as part of the recommendation from the police department, it talked about the required spaces. And I'm gonna ask the chief to speak on this if, if needed, depending on what the council wants for information. But part of the recommendation from the police department was talking about that four was only required on here. There are fourteen. I didn't see this as needed, to be quite honest. Um, although I don't typically take a negative approach to, or say no to handicap parking spaces, I don't see it here. Um, I think it's farther away from the door. I don't see that, that parking, that area is quite challenging to begin with. Um, and I, I, I personally don't see the need for it based off all the information that I've done. Um, what are my colleagues' thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Tony, um, I, I sort of concur, plus there's no guarantee, even if we create this, uh, this space, the parking space, that it's gonna be allocated to this gentleman that made the request. I mean, it would be, would be available to anyone who has a placard, so.
As all the spaces are. You are correct, yes. Is there any other dialogue? What's this council's pleasure?
Uh, make a motion to not approve it.
There's a motion to deny from Tony. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second discussion. So all, uh, so, uh, all in favor to deny, I guess? Skews that cumbersomeness. Uh, so Tim, voting aye says you agree that we deny it, okay? So, Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye, as in denial. Thank you. We'll get that a little bit smoother.
The next item, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is the petition of Kathy Noon's, thirty Leahy Drive, requesting a no parking on Leahy Drive Northwest, uh, near the northwest corner of Wapping Drive and Leahy Drive. You have a late item recommendation provided by the police department requesting additional time to study the matter.
This is Tim, making a motion to continue to the, well, twenty-ninth meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Before we, uh, go further, I'd like discussion. Chief, is the twenty-ninth long enough? And I'm gonna give you a moment to unmute if you need to. Is the twenty-ninth long enough for you to do that, uh, research that you need to do? Or do you need longer than that?
Yes, I think we can get it, I think we can get it done by the twenty-ninth. Um, and I was also looking to address the council. Um, when the matter came up for the Milford Street about a new process that I'd like to introduce, uh, with the council's permission. It's a procedure that we adopted from the city of Newport, um, which adds a little bit more validity and substance into, uh, the police department weighing in on these types of, uh, parking blocks.
I'm very, I know, I'm sure we're all interested in hearing, uh, maybe a smoother way of doing this. Certainly open to it. Okay, so we had a motion and a second to continue to the twenty-ninth. Is there any other discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
The next, the next item, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the town council, is item F three. This is the petition of Jason, uh, Paganelli of twenty-three South Grove Avenue, Warren, requesting permission to host the twenty-twenty Colt State Park Half Marathon on November one. You have a late item recommendation, uh, from the police department to approve with conditions.
So I was hoping for some clarity, and maybe, Mr. Solicitor, you could help me here, is that the Colt State Park is obviously not under our jurisdiction, nor is it being suggested in this application. But he was looking for approval for Papa Squash, which is also a state road. Um, is it appro-, I mean, I'm, I'm happy, I, I support this event. I think it's wonderful. I have no problems with it. But is it, is this something that should be referred to R I D O T and D E M?
So I, I'm not sure if they've applied there yet, but no matter what, they will have to apply, because as you point out, this is state property. And, um, I'm not, it may very well be there are portions of this that somehow cross town roads, so it can't hurt for the town to give its approval. But I think the applicant needs to be told that before they move forward, they will need state approval.
Excellent. The, the clerk heard and confirmed that. We'll make sure we share that with the applicant. So, okay.
So I would make a motion to approve it contingent up on, uh, clearance with D E M and, uh, D O T.
Okay, so that was Tony making the motion. Is there a second?
Tim's second.
Tim's second. Is there any discussion? Uh, the clerk would like to make a point.
Yes, thank, thank you. I, I just wanted to point out that I believe the petition is very clear and that it's only talking about those parts of, of the streets that are specifically the property of the town. I think they've, they've said in their application that they are, are seeking the approval of this, of the state people about the state properties.
I saw that.
I don't know if, okay, now you can hear me. I saw that, but one of the things that the, the map looked as though he was proposing that Papa Squash was a town road, when in fact it's a state road. And I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. That's all, so. Okay, so it sounds like the applicant was already aware of all of these things, but just wanted to make sure it was on the record. So we had a motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion? Okay, Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Thank you.
The, uh, next item, Mr. Chairman, and members, members of the town council, is the petition of Jenny Williford, the PTO president, thirty-five Wash of, uh, excuse me, this is the, um, I, I have, if I'm repeating myself, it's because my voice is coming back at me, so it's a little awkward, okay? Uh, but it is the petition of Jenny Williford, PTO president of the Ceteris PTO, uh, requesting the use of the town common on June sixteenth, uh, for the end of the year school picnic. Uh, and you have the recommendations provided the town, by the town administrator, the fire chief, the recreation director, and also the, um, police department to approve with certain conditions.
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion we approve it. However, you know, to be sure with, with the concerns that were brought up by the, uh, director of the recreation, of recreation, I should say, to make sure the place, uh, the town common is left as clean as they find it.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt on Tony's motion?
Yes, please.
Um, also make the motion contingent on any executive order that may be in place on June sixteenth. Let's hope there isn't, but these gatherings may not be permitted by executive order, depending on how things go.
So I'll move.
Okay, so that was Tony making the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mary made the second. Is there discussion?
No, I was just going to echo that as long as the state emergency COVID nineteen is lifted. Um, hopefully it is, we'll, we'll see, but, um.
Here's hoping. My goodness, here's hoping, so. All right, hearing no other discussion, uh, Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
That's Tony, Aaron?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Thank you.
Finally, item F five is the petition of Antonio Avila on behalf of the Portuguese Beneficial Association, Dom Luiz Felipe, uh, requesting an accessible park- uh, requesting an accessible parking space on St. Elizabeth Street. This is the first reading.
Tim, make a motion to approve the first reading?
Second.
And so Tim made the motion, Tony made the second. Is there any discussion?
Uh, obviously, this is not the time for us to bring up any issues. We'll wait for the second reading.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Agreed. Is there any other discussion? Tim?
Could you just, I'm not sure if one of the residents who has called probably several, several of us on this issue is on the phone or not, um, but can you just explain the first and second reading to make sure everyone's clear?
I certainly.
For this is because the discussion happens at the second reading.
So Mary rightly pointed that out, and so did Tony, that this is first reading. I like to call it the hear ye, hear ye portion of the show, so we tell the people of Bristol that we will be discussing this. It's to, it's to give people advance notice if they feel that they want to be part of the conversation. Um, then the discussion will actually happen at our next meeting, which is April 29th, which is the second reading. Um, and as we go through this, hopefully, I'm sure we're gonna be doing Zoom again for that one. Um, and what I would, I'm gonna stop right here and just say that if you're listening to this call right now and you want to be part of the discussion at the end of the month, it would be infinitely easier to have that happen if you use Zoom. It is free. We're not pushing Zoom as a product, but this is what we've chosen to do our meetings like this. Uh, you can download an application on your iPhone, if you have an Android phone, or a computer. And that allows for us to see someone's hand raised. It allows to see their name. Uh, it's a much easier way. Without doing that, I'm, uh, we're gonna figure out how we're gonna go through this, but right now, as you can tell, almost everybody's muted, so if you're calling in, you would never know that you wanted to share anything. So, um, I'm gonna, we're gonna work through these technical issues. Uh, I'm not sure how we work through that one, but I'll say it again, is that before the 29th, talk to, if you know how to do it, download it. If you don't, talk to a family member or a friend who does, and they can walk you through it. It's super simple, and it'll allow better access. And you actually see the video of, of our, I'll say beautiful faces. I'll include you with those beautiful faces, not me, so. Um, does that make sense? Uh, so I just wanted to take a moment and say that. So, we had a motion and a second to approve the first reading. Again, all conversation will happen at the second reading. Uh, hearing no other discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of town council, is the public service appointment section of the agenda. The first is item G1A. This is for the council's, uh, appointment of the Board of Fire Engineers as proposed by the, um, by the chief.
So I'll move to approve it.
Second.
So the motion was made by Tony to approve and seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, and members of the town council, is the Board of Canvassers. This is, uh, a, uh, three-year term to expire in March of 2026. The, um, Republican Town Committee is nominating Michael Smith, currently serving for reappointment.
So I'll move to appoint Michael Smith.
Second.
So the motion was made by Tony and seconded by Mary to approve Michael Smith. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aaron?
Aye.
I also say aye. Thank you.
The next item is the Board of Canvassers alternate members. Uh, you have, uh, the nomination of Eric Hazelhurst, the chairman of the Democrat Town Committee of Denise Ashola of 50 Brooks Farm Drive, currently serving, seeking reappointment, and the, uh, appointment of Thomas Carroll, the Republican Chairman of Peter Hewitt, 11 Wendy Drive, also currently serving, seeking reappointment.
I'll move that we, uh, accept the recommendations of the chair, of the party chairs.
Second.
We had a motion from Mary and seconded by Tim, um, to approve both nominations. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary? Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Thank you.
The next item is Recreation Board. This is a, uh, one, uh, full term to expire in February of 2023. You have Crystal Pacheco of 54 Graylock Road, currently serving as auxiliary member who would like the full membership. The council, as you will recall, asked me to find out if the current auxiliary members were interested in being elevated to full members. Ms. Pacheco was the first auxiliary, so we asked her first, and she said yes.
So I'll move to appoint, um, Ms. Pacheco.
A second, but could I, um, say that we would move up Don Squires to the first alternate position?
But, um, I'm okay with that.
If, if you, if you, if you don't mind, it might be better just for the, for the sake of the, of the minutes, just to take that one next.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, Tony made the motion. You, you seen me reaching back and forth here. What I'm doing is muting my laptop while Lou is speaking, because there's a delay, and Lou hears his own voice about a half a second after he's speaking. It's kind of a little disorienting. So if you would, just give me a half's, uh, breath before you make the motion, because I wanna unmute so I can hear everybody, okay? So we'll work through this. So, um, I'm sorry, so, uh, we had a motion from Tony and a second by Mary. Um, and then, Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony? Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye, and I hear another motion coming from Mary.
Yes, I'd like to just move that we, um, elevate Don Squires to the first alternate position.
Second.
There's a motion from Mary to elevate Don Squires to the first auxiliary position, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also say aye.
The council's instruction to, um, uh, advertise the, the now vacant second auxiliary member.
I agree.
Thank, thank you.
Item I1, and this is, uh, something that was in Councilwoman Perella's prerogative on March 11th regarding the Franklin, Franklin Street parking problem that has been observed earlier this meeting.
So I talked to the administrator a little bit earlier, and he had reached out to, um, DPW Director, uh, Kevin. Kevin, are you on the line? Or, and Mr. Administrator, I'm happy to go to you first.
Yeah, uh, actually, Mr. Chairman, I am on the line. Kevin McBride.
Thank you, Kevin. I ended, I just had to take a moment to unmute.
And I, I did look into this, excuse me, um, and with Lou's, uh, help in researching the previously approved council minutes relative to the no parking, uh, adjacent to the driveway exiting the Franklin Court facility. Um, information provided by, uh, uh, by Lou indicates that there was, uh, 21 feet to the west, no parking, and 15 feet to the east. Uh, I measured those locations, and both of those, uh, no parking areas are striped accordingly. Um, and I did note that, uh, exiting that driveway onto Franklin Street, um, there's a new mirror that was installed on the utility pole across the street, I presume by the owner of Franklin Court. Um, I found that to be unusable by the driver. Um, but the existing mirror that exists on the building, uh, to the east side of the driveway gives a clear view of traffic approaching from the west. So, uh, I don't know what the council's pleasure is relative to additional no parking, but what is there, um, is certainly what is approved by the council, uh, standing, uh, this date.
Well, Kevin, does it seem to be, uh, dangerous to come out of there because, as you said, one of the mirror, so, so there are two mirrors. Is that it? One is, one, one is helpful, one is not?
That's correct. There's a mirror that's directly across from you as you exit the facility onto Franklin Street. Um, that one doesn't seem to provide any, you know, any help exiting. However, the mirror on the building, uh, if you look to your right when exiting, provides a clear view of the traffic to the west. Um, and it seems to provide, you know, uh, the driver exiting, uh, the, uh, indication of an oncoming vehicle, uh, if used properly. Um, you know, again, it's, it's, I guess it would be council's pleasure as far as what you'd want to do there. There is a 21-foot space striped, uh, for no parking there. I mean, certainly you could, you could provide no parking all the way to the other, uh, entrance location, uh, to provide complete clear view of the intersection. I don't know if the, if the, uh, police department has noted any accident history at that location. I have not been aware of that. Um, so I, I guess at this point, based on, uh, your concerns, Councilwoman Perella, I don't know what the council's pleasure is.
Well, I don't think that we would want to get rid of parking all the way, uh, on that, in that section, because, again, as we stated earlier, parking's at a premium on any of these streets. Um, I'm wondering, and I don't know enough about it, Kevin, if, if a few more feet would make a difference. The other thing, as you're saying, uh, as you were speaking, I was thinking, like, maybe it would be beneficial if you would hold a workshop with the residents on how to use those mirrors. Like, I'm, you know, I, I think you mentioned at the last meeting that there, um, did you say concave or convex, something like that, that there, I forgot which one you said, but, you know.
They're convex mirrors.
Right, so how that, uh, may distort something or how you view it, because, you know, I, I'm not really use them much, but I've, when I've seen them, I'm not really sure how, how, you know, how helpful they would be. I just don't really know. Um, but I mean, I think that we could discuss the feasibility, and I don't know if it would make much of a difference or not, to just go another couple of feet. And that is something that you would have to advise us on, but I definitely think it would be worthwhile to schedule a meeting there with some of the, um, the residents who, you know, many of them drive and, and explain how that works, because, and, and where they should be looking. And then I guess the second question that I would have as a result of your comments, if one works and one doesn't, um, who put in the one that doesn't work, and is there a way to fix that one?
I, I'm not quite sure who installed that second mirror. Um, I, I presume it was the Franklin Court, uh, facility themselves that installed it. Um, I know it wasn't the Department or the town, and, and I hesitate to even do that for liability reasons. Um, but I'm pretty sure that it was, it was that facility themselves that installed it. I'm not sure what they were using for criteria, or, you know, if somebody, you, you need more than one person to install it. Um, as far as, uh, public workshop, I mean, we could certainly do that. I mean, that's, that's could be helpful, I suppose. I could talk to, uh, you know, the, uh, executive director at the facility and, and see what her thoughts are, uh, relative to doing that. Um, and as far as, you know, e- extending the no parking, uh, to the west further, I mean, we could certainly do that. That's, that's not a difficult thing to do, and it will certainly improve site distance. Again, um, you know, the primary factor when you're looking at site distances, uh, driver's site distance, so it would apply to, you know, the individual traveling down, uh, Franklin Street. Um, and the, and the individual exiting the driveway has a responsibility to ensure that obviously the traffic is clear. Um, I didn't look at it from, you know, a standpoint of if we went an extra 10 feet or what have you, or say even an extra 20 feet, which would be a parking space, how much additional, uh, site distance that would provide an exiting driver from the facility. I don't know what that answer is offhand.
I was thinking more like maybe, like, um, I don't think a whole parking space, maybe like a quarter to a half of a parking space, maybe like six, eight, 10 feet, but, um, I guess, I don't know if there's something in, you know, in traffic, um, control and planning, you know, that for every foot back, increase a site distance by X, that would be one thing. And I also am just curious why, is there a way that that, uh, second mirror could be, you know, that you could suggest to the executive director that the second mirror be moved to such, in such a way that it would actually be helpful?
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, and I, you know, obviously, someone's got to go up and look at the mounting, but I think it's a matter of adjusting, um, how it's, uh, focused, if you will, uh, that it's focused on traffic approaching from the west. I don't, it didn't provide a clear, uh, sight picture from western, or traffic moving easily from the west side of the driveway. Um, and I, again, presume it was them that installed that. Um, and I'm not sure. I could talk to her about that to see who had done that. And, uh, if necessary, we could probably provide some support. Again, I just want to make sure that, you know, there's no liability on the part of the town when we do something of that nature, which is kind of a non-standard, uh, traffic control device, if you will.
Well, is it a liability, um, for Mike or for Amy that it would be, uh, I mean, if we just gave them advice as to how they could correct it, so that it would be more beneficial to their residents? Is that?
I could, I could certainly, I could certainly have our, you know, one of our, uh, crews support them in doing that. Again, I didn't want to install that for the liability reasons, and I think maybe Mike, Mike or Amy could chime in on that.
No, I, I agree with that aspect of it. I'd like to hear what the lawyers have to say. I just, I, I just think if we give them advice, would that be, would we then be liable?
I think it's, this is Mike speaking. I think it's fine for us to make a recommendation. We'll do it by letter, and I'll put the appropriate waiver language in the letter.
Mr. Chairman? That certainly works for me, and, and I can certainly follow up with the executive director. And that's, this is Kevin speaking.
Uh, so, this is Mary. Um, would a motion, um, this isn't a complete motion, but that we would, um, advise the executive director of Franklin Court on how to make the, um, the mirror that is on, not functional right now, more functional, uh, discuss with her the, um, possibility of holding a workshop on how to really look at those mirrors, and I feel like it's, um, and then continue to maybe investigate if you went back like a half a car length more, like what would, what would that improve? Would it make a difference or not?
Okay. Mary, Mary, this is Mike speaking again?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I, I think it might be more appropriate to refer this to administration. Let us come up with a roadmap or game plan and then act on it as opposed to trying to figure all this out right now.
All right, I'll, I'll withdraw the, um, um, motion.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is Kevin speaking. This is Kevin speaking. If I could add in, it might support what Mike had said is, um, I could have a discussion with the, uh, executive director, and maybe it would be, uh, that facility submits a petition to the council for X amount of feet extension of the no parking area, and that way it might be appropriately worked through the, uh, council in that manner.
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Tony?
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm sorry, is, um, Director McBride finished?
Yes, uh, Tony, this is Kevin. Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, thank you. Um, what I would suggest, I, I think one of the issues, having been a driver's education teacher for 15 years, uh, sometimes it's, uh, creatures of habit or lack of. Um, and I would say that I'm not so sure that these folks are as familiar as to how to use their mirror. Uh, so I agreed that it would be very instrumental to really do some sort of demonstration, walk them through, you know, because that may correct the problem itself, you know, and I, I think that's, we are good starting point. It's to actually have them drive up to and then say, okay, you know, do you understand how to use the, you know, the mirrors?
I agree. I agree. Um, Aaron, I, I think you were going to make a point earlier.
Well, it was just a, a quick point. I know we had, um, dealt with this issue a few months back, and really the intent of the council was to extend that no parking spot by six feet as Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Perella was, uh, saying. And so I think that, um, you know, if we were to kind of support that, it, it was my understanding that when I, that the, um, the box, maybe only a couple of feet had been added, and I think that that was a creature, uh, that happened because our ordinances, our ordinances will articulate how long the boxes actually need to be. And so when we talked about it at the council meeting, we had said, hey, we want an extra six feet onto that box. Um, but the number that we had put in and, and approved probably actually only added an extra additional two feet onto that box. And so I think that that's kind of why we're sitting here right now is because our, the intent of what we were trying to do, uh, really didn't end up getting done. But that's all I had to say, and it sounds like we're moving forward on this in the, in the right way.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Kevin McBride, again, if I could just. If I could just chime in and maybe clarify a little more. What was determined and the reason it looks that, looks like only additional two feet were added was the fact that I went out there after that no parking was striped and determined that it was two feet short of the 21 feet that was in the ordinance. Uh, and that's why that was added. But that, that entire box is what was approved uh, per the last council uh, petition that was submitted. And that was a, a year or two ago, and that's what is on file. But that little extension you see is a correction I made to my crews because it was a little short of what was approved by the council at the time. And that's really all that was. If we want to extend it, I think maybe a petition from the facility itself might be in order. But again, I leave that to the council.
Um, so it's, it sounds as though, and thank you Kevin, it sounds as though the suggestion from the solicitor sounds quite appropriate that we refer this to administration, including uh, DPW director, um, and then come back to this council if action from the council is necessary. Would you agree with that, Mike?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, Mary, this was your.
Yeah, I just moved that we um, refer this to the administrator and um, to, you know, finalize a plan for us.
Second. So there was a motion by Mary to refer to the administrator to finalize a plan, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary? Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, to members of the town council is item I two, and this is from the chairman regarding the disposition of 1020 Hope Street.
So I'm going to ask the solicitor to just take a moment and refresh everyone's memory of why this is on the agenda, what it means and what it doesn't mean. Mr. Solicitor.
The reason it's on the agenda is because the housing authority needs to convey the property to the trust. And in order to do that, um, HUD, which is the organization that's actually funding the housing authority, needs the council's approval, or at least not its objection to the transfer of the property. HUD can only fund um, residences for seniors. It cannot fund office space or recreation space. So in essence, um, that component of the senior center, since no residents live there, needs to move from the housing authority to the trust. And this is really um, very pro forma. It's just one of the things on the checklist that must be accomplished in order to allow this transaction to take place.
So just for clarity too, is that, that it's probably obvious, but HUD is uh, Housing and Urban Development. It's the agency that oversees um, the senior housing and a whole bunch of things, particularly in this instance, senior housing.
And provides all the funding, or most of the funding.
Key point there. So uh, what's this council's pleasure?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to write a letter stating the council has no objection to return 1020 Hope Street back to the trust.
Second. So Tim made that motion, uh, Tony seconded that motion. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary? Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Now I also say aye, thank you.
Uh, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is a request for executive session uh, from the Director of Community Development. Um, so we will take that up at the conclusion of the public agenda. The chairman is nodding. Uh, the next item, our borrowing resolutions uh, provided by the bond council. That's item I four.
So I'm, before we get a motion on this, Raquel, did you need or would like to share anything in regards to this? Give you a moment on you.
Sure, this is for um, the Clean Water Act. Um, it is a million dollars for uh, replacement and design implementation, 1.1 million uh, for electrical improvements, um, 125,000 for compost facility design, 400,000 for solid waste improvement, and 50,000 for bulk storage.
Is there any questions from the council?
Clearly a very important uh, bond resolution. Uh, this is Tim, I make a motion to adopt the bond resolution.
Second. I, that was a double second there. I'm going to take it from Mary this time. So we had, uh, Tim made the motion, Mary seconded it to adopt this bond resolution. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary? Tony? Aaron?
Aye.
I also say aye, thank you.
The next item was item I five, and this is an extension of the state of emergency declared by the town administrator on March 16th. Uh, and this will allow this to run through uh, April 20th, I believe. Yes.
That's correct.
I just unmuted. So Mr. Administrator, I'd like uh, you, for you, if you wouldn't mind, just to take a moment here and maybe reiterate what this means. Um, and I don't think we all know what it means moving forward, but um, it is imperative that uh, people of Bristol understand what you've done and what this council has done. Please, sir.
Sure, so while we follow the direction of the governor in the um, her emergency orders as it relates to um, uh, general laws and things that apply to all residents in Rhode Island, uh, this allows us to manage our uh, municipal ordinances, uh, our licensing authorities, and our, the way we actual go, uh, manage our government. So uh, it's declaring a local uh, emergency. Uh, we can go a little bit beyond of what, what the governor is doing. And again, it uh, it legally gives us good grounds and standing to enforce uh, local ordinances that may have to be changed temporarily on emergency basis.
Okay, and again, clarity for everyone, and obviously there's any input is, is certainly looked for, but this would uh, extend the March 16th, um, uh, sorry, emergency declaration moved to April 8th. So then the motion would be to consent, if there's a motion.
Um, could I just ask a, a quick question, and that is, um, given that the governor's afforded um, everything closed and so forth in the gatherings through the end of April, should we just amend that April 8th date, or doesn't it really matter at this point?
So.
Yeah, the April 20th, which is your next council meeting. Uh, but heard many of the governor's orders, they are varying dates. Some of them are April 23rd, some of them are the 15th, and some of them are recently coming up. So I, I, I think we uh, assess as we go along. Your next meeting is April 20th, and um, we can uh, have a new one presented at that point, or this one shall expire then.
So Mary's comment came from the agenda, and the agenda shows April 8th on it as part of the printed agenda. So I'm thinking that this is, this was probably printed prior to the adjustment, so.
The um, the A has the 20th date in it.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. So this, so for clarity, everyone, this would go through April 20th. April 20th is our next meeting, which is a um, budget, uh, public hearing for the budget. So what's this council's pleasure?
Second.
So Mary made the motion to, Lou, you said consent, and she said approve. I'm going to take that as consent. Um, and Tony seconded that motion. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
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 Aaron? I also say aye, thank you.
Okay, the next item is the item J one, and this is bid 924. This is for police vehicle service and repair. There is one bid submitted from Safeway Auto Sales of Bristol in the amount of $63 per hour.
Make a motion to refer this to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second. Tim?
Tony made a motion to refer to the administrator, was seconded by Tim. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also say aye, thank you.
This is J two, this is bid 925 for 100 kilowatt natural gas generator.
You have three bids, bids received. The first is from Gem Plumbing and Heating of Lincoln, and the, the bid was, was given in two parts. Uh, in this case, it would be uh, $52,850 for a new generator and $83,525 for replacement. Uh, the second is from K Electric of Warwick in the amount of $77,400 for a new generator and $52,054 for replacement. And the third is Wayne Electric of Bristol for $62,515 for both versions of the um, of the bid. Um, just on, on the surface, it looks like it's very possible that the first bidder reversed his numbers in error, but this will take some um, clarification once the bids are reviewed in finer detail than just simply opening them.
So Mr. Clark, I'm glad you pointed that out, because I was going to do that also. Um, it looks like there may be some confusion here that a, uh, as he pointed out, as Lou had pointed out, the replacement on the first one was 83, 525, at least the bid, uh, and new was 52, 850, which is potentially wrong. But regardless, these get referred to the administrator and the uh, appropriate department to act in the best interest. So what's this council's pleasure?
Chairman, I make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town. This is Tim.
Second. Mary?
There's a, there was a motion by Tim, seconded by Mary, to refer to the administrators. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary? Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also say aye, and I think I'm going to say this in my sleep too. Thank you.
Next item are the individual council member, agenda items beginning with the chairman.
So I'm going to be real quick. I know we've been here a little bit, and it, it's uh, hats off to everyone. Um, I know this is a tad cumbersome, um, but excellent job. As it seems as though we can hear everybody clearly. Lou and I are the closest, we're here at town hall, and we were hoping that it would move the meeting along a little bit better, and I believe it has. Um, but we'll figure this out for the next ones if we don't get that feedback, and when he comes on and I come on. Um, I'm going to be real straight forward and say, stay safe out there. Um, I work for a company, it's a, a respiratory company, and on every email it says, wash your hands. And really, uh, you know, be aware of your surroundings. The governor has a lot of um, emergency declarations out there. And pretty much what it says is stay home and stay safe. Go out when you need food. Um, and this is an opportunity for Bristol to be at its best, where we help our neighbors, we help our friends. We knock on our neighbor's door, maybe we call them at this point and say, are you, are you okay? Do you need anything? Are you safe? And when you're healthy and you can go out there and you're going out for yourself, we help our friends and we help our neighbors. Um, and I think we, it's a shining example. I'd just like to take an extra minute to thank the administrator and staff, and I know he's going to do that separately. Um, but uh, some outstanding work is being done. I'm, I'm not going to take away some of his uh, thunder here, but uh, the town has been doing an excellent job with meals for seniors in need. Um, and I'll let the administrator certainly uh, expound upon that. But long story short, outstanding job in a horrible time. And if it doesn't feel like the world's going to get back to normal, it will. I'm looking forward to seeing all of you shaking your hands, um, sitting next to people I don't know, having dinner, um, walking down the bike path and not giving 10 feet of space, those kind of things. And I'm sure you all are too, but I'll say it one more time. Please, stay safe out there. The town is ready to, to be of assistance, uh, and I believe we're surrounded by uh, a state which is doing some excellent work in a very troubling time. But again, stay safe, thank you.
Just wanted to thank everybody for a great job on the budget. Immense amount of work went into it, department heads, great job to my colleagues, the community. I, you know, we went through a really tough budget. Uh, we prioritized the schools this year, I think we did a great job. Um, but uh, I'm sure we're, we're going to get this, we can get back to normal. Um, but everybody, I just wish everybody be safe, and uh, also to watch those uh, little wipes that you're using. Please don't push, put those down the toilet. They find each other, as the chairman has told us before, and they get into a huge ball and they blow out some of our water pumps. So uh, please keep those out. And I know the carts and recycling are rolling out first week, and uh, please refer to your pamphlets, um, but it's going to save us a lot of uh, on the tipping fees, and it's going to increase our recycling and save us a million dollars over time. So it's a, it's a pretty big deal moving to automation. But everybody be safe and uh, and thank you for all your hard work on the budget. Have a good night.
Mr. Tech Zero?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the administrator and to all of the staff, because I know what it takes on the other end, you know, all the coordination, listening to all the conferences, and the amount of time, it just gets taken up and eaten up by all the conferences, and you feel like you're stretched out, you know? So I have to give a lot of credit, you know, for keep things going pretty smooth in the town. It's very much appreciated, not, you know, by all residents, uh, even though sometimes we don't think so. Deep down, they do appreciate it. Um, the other piece is just a piece of good news. I pulled HH 12, okay? Just to point out a couple of items, we did get two grants uh, from the Rhode Island Historic Preservation Heritage Commission. Uh, you know, and so the Bristol Historical Preservation Society will begin $7,500. Uh, and also Cockshell Farm Museum will begin $6,000. So it's very much appreciated that these folks. So in the midst of all, we do have some good news, you know, which is very much appreciated and support to good causes in the town of Bristol. Uh, so again, I wish the best, and let's take, you know, I know we do, but everybody needs to take this very serious. All you need to do is watch the numbers, you know? Every time we turn the TV on, how many more deaths, you know, how many more we're not going to be able to see? And how many of our family members, hopefully will not get to that, but family members who are not able to stand by their, uh, family members in the last minute of their breath. So we got to take this very serious and uh, be sure that it doesn't affect us as much as it has other communities. So God bless all, stay safe.
Ms. Perella?
Well, that's the sobering and um, scary times. I just wanted to take a few moments and thank um, Steve and our EMA, our administrator, EMA, fire chief, police chief, everyone who's working um, to work on this issue and keep Bristol safe and be in the forefront of um, our own executive orders. Thank you very much, you've all done a really good job. Uh, Nathan, thank you for, I know you've been on many of those calls. Also, I can't think of a better person to be chairman with the technology part, because you love technology. And um, getting us all on on this, it's actually gone way better than I anticipated. Um, it is, I just wanted to urge people also to be safe and to do the best they can and reach out to their neighbors. It's a very scary uh, time, I think. Um, and especially if you have older relatives that, you know, still need help, and if you're out there and, and trying to go to their house and still maybe having to go out to the store yourself or still have to go into the office every so often, it's, it's very frightening. Uh, we're coming up on Easter, and um, I think many, um, I know many of the religious communities in Bristol, I give my hat off to them because they've really stepped up and been able to um, have virtual mass online on Facebook Live, and I'm, I'm sure all the other religious organizations have too. I just have not had a chance to go on their website, because I'd like to see some of their uh, services as well. And we're going into what the high holy times of um, Passover and Easter, uh, which will all have to be done virtually. I know that's a real change for um, certainly for my, in my lifetime. Um, I want to wish everyone a blessed Easter, uh, the best that they can do. Um, maybe, you know, being apart with their, apart from their family and friends. Um, I don't know, because I know I couldn't get my mother onto something like Zoom, but this would be a good way to maybe have dinner together and not be together. Um, so I think we all just, um, I think it's cliche to say we're all in this together, but we all are. Everybody's saying that, but we really need to just stay strong, and um, and, and that's part of what has been on my mind as we've talked about the budget, because very, very anxiety inducing uh, situation. Um, so I want to wish people the, the, um, So I want to wish people the, the best Easter they could have under these circumstances. And we can all pray that this will go away very, very, very soon, and that they'll come up with an antiviral medication that, that works and that Rhode Island can continue to move forward with good leadership, and Bristol can move with good leadership that we have had to try to keep us all and to mitigate this as much as we possibly can. And that is really all I have to say. Good health to everyone. I can't wait for the time that we can just go back to our lives and have our regular meetings together and see people and all of that. And then with that, Kevin McBride, I know you've been taking this on this week with the difficulty of the rolling out the new carts. And my trash night I put out tomorrow, so I'm kind of looking forward to it. So thank you very much.
Mr. Larry?
Well, thanks, everybody. I want to echo some of the, am I, oh, yeah, I am on, right? I want to echo some of the, thanks to some of the others, like the town administrator, the department heads all coming together and putting together a budget. I also want to take a minute and say thanks to all the families during this time. It's when we're going through the budget, it can be a pretty taxing process for us. It can be, it really takes, we're, every night we're working on the budget. Sometimes during the days, we're working on the budget, and we have a lot of our families that are out there kind of pulling, doing a little bit more work to watch the kids or to watch the grandkids or anything like that.
Hear your kids in the background.
Yeah, and they should be in bed by now, really, they should. But, and, and on top of all that, not only are, should we be thanking our families, but they have to live with us during this whole time of self-quarantine. And I've, I've been self-quarantined for about 20 days now. So I really got to give my wife a lot of credit for putting up with me during this time. I also want to say, in these remarkable times, I think it's also very critical that our small businesses know about some of the resources that are available to them. If we thought things were tough for our downtown businesses before this, well, look at it now, because really there is nothing, there's not a lot going on in downtown. And we're lucky to have some people that, you know, can still do takeout and everything like that. But at the end of the day, we have to mitigate now. And, you know, if you're thinking about purchasing from small businesses, there are resources out there. I know if you go to ri-smallbusiness.org, it's an initiative that's been ordered by the Lieutenant Governor's Office. If you're a small business, you can register your business there and allow people to purchase gift certificates for your business so that once this all blows over, then people will be able to come to your business and use the gift certificates. And then there's also a lot of other people out there that do want to help. So there's, are people that want to go out there and purchase gift certificates, but they want to know who in the community are on some of those registries. Or we want to make it easier for people to do that type of thing. So if you go to ri-smallbusiness.org, you will find the website that's supported by the Lieutenant Governor's Office on that. I know that there's also some other resources for our small businesses. Kind of here in Bristol, I know that Mary Ann Bergen-Holtz has kind of worked to put together a small group. I believe it's called, I have it right here, Ri Bristol Small Business Strategies, or something like that. I'll put the information out there on my website, but she's really trying to put a lot of information out there that might help people know what kind of federal benefits are available to them and what kind of benefits might be available to gig workers and everything like that. But she pushes people kind of in the right direction. So that's all I have right now, but again, thanks to everybody. We have to do everything that we possibly can to flatten this curve. So if you can, if it's something that you can do, you know, stay home or pay attention to what our fire department says or the Rhode Island Department of Health or our town administrator. Thank you, thank you, everybody, and wash those hands.
Town Administrator Agenda Items.
Thank you, everyone, all of you, and thank you for your support of the departments. I can tell you that the departments are all following the guidelines of the Department of Health and CDC. I want to reassure all of you as council members and the public that may be tuned in that we are running, we are healthy, we are fully staffed, we are well-prepared and well-planned, and have good plans. One of the things that we did immediately, and I think this was from the 13th of, of March, we implemented our task force, and I'm sure you've heard about it. This is, has a director underneath, the Fire Chief, who is our emergency management director. And we're getting calls continually, we're getting calls from outside of Bristol, people looking for help. So all types of topics are coming up, but I think a lot of it is reassurance to the public. It's a friendly voice to listen to. We are, we're also taking meal requests, and we've set up that meal program with a redundant supply. Everything we're doing has redundancy. The police department has a redundant, bifurcated it. Police chief oversaw that project, which is probably the first time in Rhode Island where you had one police department broken down into two. So it's to contain any illness that may happen in the department, so we can still function. Same thing with the meal program. We can make meals. We can make hundreds of them at recreation in the kitchen. That was a former Army Reserve Center, and we also have the state supply of frozen meals that are coming in. And we have community support with this. We have Atlantic Cape that's helping us. They dropped off large freezers. We have masks that are being made at Constitution Braded Rugs. A volunteer to donate masks, which are going to be going out to all the seniors with their meals. So we have a good program. We have a good supply of volunteers with background checks. And I said it at the beginning with our department heads, this is going to be a marathon. We're going to go slow. We're going to go slow. We're going to build the program, and we're going to be prepared for hundreds, if not over 1,000, that we'll be able to handle. And our goal here is to keep our seniors, our vulnerable population in their homes as much as possible as this progresses. So I just wanted to reassure all of you. I know there's a lot of apprehension out there. We're very well-prepared. We've taken, we've been patient. We've taken it slow. We haven't panicked. And that's the message that we're trying to express to our residents also. We're going to be okay. We're going to get through this. And the thing to remember is, if you're home, you're not going to get sick. If you're home, you're not going to get sick. So that's how you minimize your chances of getting ill. So again, I want to thank our department heads, everybody who's following their continuity of operation plans. We've staggered shifts. We've made, we've made sure our employees have as minimal contact with each other and as the public as possible, because we have essential services that we need to carry out. And I assure you, I have every reason in the world right now to believe that we're going to be successful in this. It's going to be difficult for the next few weeks. Bristol is doing pretty well so far, but it is going to be difficult, and it is going to be testing. But I assure you that we're well-positioned. We have very good department heads in place, and everything is running, running smoothly. Last thing I'd like to say is happy Easter to everyone. And again, we're going to get through this, and we have good days ahead. And I have a lot of faith in our, our state leaders and the brightest minds that are working on a cure for this down the road. So we're, we're going to, we're going to be okay. Thank you.
I think we have a motion for executive session from the solicitor.
Mr. Solicitor?
Yes. To begin with, I know it's been obvious that all five council members have been present throughout the entire meeting, beginning from the opening. I actually should have had our town court, Lou Sorio, take a roll call at the very beginning, but I know the minutes reflect that all five of you are obviously there. The motion to convene into executive session is pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 42465A5 regarding the lease and disposition of real property or the acquisition of open space.
I'll move.
Second.
So there was a motion by Tony, seconded by Tim. Before we go to executive session, you all received two emails. First invite for the meeting that you're on right now, and a separate email with a separate login and a separate PIN. So you will be exiting or finishing this meeting, leave meeting, if you will, in the bottom in red, and then logging back in with the new executive session meeting number and PIN that is required. At the end of executive session, again, we'll go through this. We will come back to this meeting as required to talk about any action, if any action was taken in the executive session, and then to adjourn this meeting. Did I capture that well, Mr. Solicitor?
You perfectly.
Okay, perfect. All right. So we had a motion and a second for executive session. Mary, I'm sorry, Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes, yes, aye.
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
All right, okay. Lastly, thank you to all that listened and watched this evening, to department heads, to the general public. We'll make this smoother and smoother, and we wanted to make sure that business continued unabated. Thank you, everyone, and good night, and I'll see my colleagues shortly.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.